Hey, Mary, I hope you took down our names so no you're not revealing our identity. I know. Anyway, welcome to the October 31st, Happy Halloween, Commission Board Meeting. And I'd start off by asking the Administrator, please take the roll.
Yes, Chair, it is Halloween, which is why we're all dressed this way, right? Happy Halloween. First, our staff support, Stephen Madcor, County Council, Mary Rathke, Clerk to the Board. Roll call, Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here.
And Commissioner Savis is at a meeting he may be able to attend before the end, but unlikely, so.
Great, and Stephen, I love your costume. It's the scariest thing I've ever seen.
I'm dressed up as county council today.
I know, that's what I meant. All right, please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so first up, we have citizen communication. And I saw, Charles, you had turned in a card.
Chair, Chair Bernard.
Arlene.
Chair Bernard, you're an S. Sherry Hall first.
Oh, Sherry Hall first. Yeah, okay, so I couldn't see this because this thing's right in my... I voted, by the way, already.
Yay.
I only had one thing on my ballot.
Vector control.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners. It's kind of fun to sit here and see you all dressed up. I love your costumes. I do want to just give you an update on the election that's going on. Election Day is Tuesday of next week, November 5th. So for anyone who hasn't turned the ballot in yet, do it in a drop box or our office. Don't mail it, it won't get to us on time. And at this time, we're at 16.8% turnout. So out of 292,109 ballots, we have received 49,053. And there's important measures, so be sure and vote. Does anybody have any questions about the election? No? Because I have some other kind of cool news to share with you. This is the year of cybersecurity. That's the big thing that everybody's talking about. And so our state election director, Steve Trout, brought Senator Chuck Riley to our office for our public test of the tally system, which was on Tuesday of this week. And that's something that we notify everyone about, and anyone can come and watch it. And he was very interested. And so at that test, we had Steve Trout, State Election Director, the State Election, or excuse me, the Secretary of State's Legislative Director, Senator Chuck Riley with his legislative aide, and then one regular citizen that was observing, like anyone has the right to do. There were lots of questions. We did a tour of the office and showed how the ballot flow goes. And as usual, our state election director again said that Clackamas is probably the best election office in the state as far as the flow and how everything gets done in there. And that's a thank you to the Commissioners that were here at the time when we went into that building and remodeled it. But you guys always support elections, and I just want to say thank you for that. Anyway, we have something else coming up because of the cybersecurity issues. Chas Jones is a Homeland Security person that's based in Benton County, Oregon, and he's going to be doing assessments of all of the elections offices by March of next year, so that we're all ready for 2020. And when we shared that with Senator Riley. And I'm also going to invite the security person from TS, our Disaster Management Director and our Facilities Director. And so Mr. Riley got really excited about that because he chairs two of the committees that include those. He chairs the General Government and Emergency Preparedness Committee, and he is the co-chair of the Joint Committee on Information Management and Technology. So he wants to come to our assessment. So he'll be getting an invitation for that. I think it's really great when a legislature actually takes the time to come and see what we do, since they are the ones who create the laws and change the laws of what we do. I was pretty impressed with all of his questions and how interested he was in all of it. And it's kind of a star for Clackamas County, because we do have a really great office.
Well, thank you. Appreciate you coming today. So don't forget to vote.
Right.
By Tuesday, 8:00.
Right. Get the ballot in the drop box.
It's too late to mail.
Too late to mail.
All right.
Right. And we didn't have any mail this morning because the post office mail truck didn't get there on time. So it should get to us later today.
All right.
Humans do work, and sometimes there's human lateness and errors, right?
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. So, Arlene, Arlene Cantor and Charles Ormsby first. And thank you, Charles, last night for coming to the T-2020. It was very nice of somebody to give you their spot.
I would like to thank you for, on behalf of residents of Clackamas County, trying to explain to other people in the region the topographical nature of this area, let alone the geologic nature of this area, which makes road construction a little expensive. And so, thank you for your comments on that, and I hope the Sunrise Corridor goes through and is enunciated as a Tier One project. I'm here on behalf of myself, sort of with my neighborhood, and for two items. One, Paul Savas had a town hall, which I attended without walking across the bridge for the first time in a couple of months. I have access to a car. But we've sort of begun a little project, and you'll maybe see the results of that about after the first of the year. And basically, it's one of the things that's come out of the Oak Grove-Lakeview Bridge project is, how do you describe, or how do you say where in the heck on the Willamette River that is? And we're seeking to define what is... If you haven't heard the term "river reach," that's what we're seeking to define. Portland, from the confluence of Columbia, Willamette River with the Columbia River, mile point zero, don't look at the old ancient maps, has named its river segments north, central, and south, and there's an overlap, obviously, with the jog in the Clackamas River. We need to do it in Clackamas County between Milwaukee, roughly, and Newburgh, which is where the mile 50. So that's something that's working on. The other thing I'm here for is, this is the missing chair formation. I've dragged it to a TriMet board meeting. I'll drag it to a Metro meeting this afternoon. When a TriMet bus pulls up to a stop, deploys the ramp, you enter the Twilight Zone in this county. We need to address mobility of people with disabilities from the time they get on a bus to the time they get off and go to their front door. We need the language. We need a critical item, and it wasn't in a recent document released by Metro as of yesterday that I found out about their design guide for streets. We need to know what's essentially the terminology of this chair, rails, whatever, and the packing block, and the report person when they're sitting in it, what it means that they take. So you know those basic dimensions when you're putting in buildings, ramps, everything else, and getting vehicles on the bus. So I hope Clackamas County can do that and continue to do that and improve the communication between citizens such as myself, neighborhoods, and the Board, and your engineers, and your planners at multiple strata of government. It needs to be done because we're putting a heck of a lot of money into roadways and so forth. And I hope one of you shows up at the November 5th meeting of the Lakeview City Council. I'll give my rant on that. Because they have concepts to take out the midline loop, which is going to be, in my opinion, very detrimental to handicap mobility from roughly the Safeway east to getting across the railroad tracks to a transit center they've conceptualized there. That's not a good idea. There's only two points of crossing, A and B, not good.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
Commissioners, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about tobacco retail licensing in our county. My name is Arlene Cantor, and I'm a resident of Clackamas County. I'm a cancer epidemiologist and a volunteer member of the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. I'm here today to urge you to rapidly move forward on a proposed county-wide tobacco retail license ordinance in order to deter young people from becoming smokers and addicted to nicotine. This is a bigger problem than they realize, and they're vaping in record numbers. It requires immediate action from our county. In January, I addressed this Board to encourage the approval of a resolution for the Public Health Department to move forward in studying and drafting a tobacco retail license policy. In June and July, I had the opportunity to be part of the process as a volunteer on the county's task force on tobacco retail licensing, which made recommendations this summer to the department during the drafting process. But the county now needs to move ahead on this, because every day without adequate enforcement of Tobacco 21 means a young person will try a tobacco product that will likely lead to a lifetime addiction with serious health consequences. I'm deeply concerned that the progress has slowed. The county needs to proceed promptly on this. The violation rate for retail tobacco and e-cigarette sales to underage individuals in our county has gone up considerably. One in five Clackamas County retailers who were visited by the Oregon Health Authority sold tobacco cigarettes to minors, and one in three sold them e-cigarettes. This is unacceptable. OHA is only able to visit 30% of tobacco retailers each year, but the county's proposed licensing program will identify and inspect every single one twice a year. This is an evidence-based control measure that will reduce youth smoking, and it has been very successful in neighboring Multnomah County. The recent executive order banning the sale of flavored e-liquids and the vaping-associated lung illness emergency emphasized the need for the tobacco retail license program. Local public health officials need to be able to identify every tobacco retailer to work proactively in enforcing tobacco control laws. With a required tobacco retail license program, they'll have a comprehensive list of retailers to do this. Without the ordinance, the passionate tobacco prevention professionals in our county have few tools to do the work that we know encourages retailers to play by the rules and save lives from tobacco and nicotine addiction. And so I urge the Board to act promptly on this vital health priority.
Thank you. We did slow this down. Do you remember why?
Board, you had asked staff to do an outreach effort with the business community and the public to determine their input on this potential ordinance. That has occurred. It is still with staff to finalize those recommendations before coming back to you. So it's not been brought back to you yet. Staff is still working on that.
Did we calendar it yet?
It's not been calendared, no.
Okay, so maybe in strategy, we need to look at calendaring. Okay?
Question, do you have, you say this is an evidence-based control measure that will reduce youth smoking. Can you get for us, or Gary, work with our staff? That was one question that I had. I was interested in looking at the data on tobacco retail licensing as an effective rule at the local level.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Les, you're up.
Good morning, Les Poole, Gladstone. I was thinking of dressing up as the Grim Reaper, but we already have one here. I thought that was really ironic that the Administrator has...
I'm a Jedi knight.
Yeah, I know, I can see that. But you've got that big giant Grim Reaper tool.
This is a lightsaber.
Which means I need to behave. I'll try to behave.
Need to call a ambulance.
Interesting conversation about abuse of tobacco, and one we don't have time for right now, but the motivation for using tobacco supersedes anything that you can do. Wow, there was a statement to ponder. Three subjects. One of them is Damascus. I just want to mention that last week I spoke about Damascus. Hopefully, we're going to see a resolution from the Supreme Court soon. And regardless of what happens in that situation, I'll call it a situation, it's much more than a situation, it's a disaster. But the city may come back, and no matter what happens, as I said last week, we really have the growth problems, the traffic problems, and the needs are there regardless of which part of it's in Happy Valley or what the outcome is. And certainly, I support the efforts to build the next section of the Sunrise Corridor if we don't keep transportation moving out there. And with no offense to anyone at Metro or TriMet, I'm talking about our commerce, which goes by truck and automobile and personal service vehicle. If we don't keep those things moving and keep our visitors, because we obviously have an economy that is looking for visitors, if we don't keep them moving, we're in big trouble. And I didn't include myself or the rest of us just going to the store. So kudos for trying to stay on top of our transportation crisis. Metro has a measure that they've been working on. It started last year. And it was a transportation bond measure. Going to borrow money and put money into transportation in Metro's district. Pretty straightforward. But the amounts were staggering, and at the time, they decided to wait and not run that measure and strictly focus on the housing bond which was passed. Now they're working on a transportation measure that includes almost $1 billion borrowed for Southwest Light Rail. I want to say 800 million for local roads. And now this week, it's grown another billion or 1.2 billion so that we can all learn how to ride the bus again. So now we have a $3 billion measure being floated around, from what I understand. And I know it's not finalized, but we all know that it's heading in that direction and that it would be wise to have separate measures rather than one giant measure. Because regardless of anyone's opinion on any of the subjects or anything I'm sharing, when the public sees something that gets that big, you could, you're just going to say, "No." And then we're back to square one. So I'm real concerned about what Metro's doing, and it certainly has control over the region, there's no mistake about that, and a lot of control over what you do. So I'm not here asking the Commission to do anything right now other than consider the direction we're heading and consider that the public is already up to here. They really are. Financially, the public is up to here. And so I see this as a symbol that Metro really isn't connected to the rest of the region. Metro's connected to Metro, so we're going to have to make some changes there, aren't we? I think so. Thanks for your time.
So the measure's 3.1 billion. About 900 million goes to South Corridor. I'm on that task force. So my concern, and we have not talked about funding mechanism at all, my concern is I believe that people in the region are property tax burdened as it is. And there's better be a different way, because I'm going to be challenged supporting something that puts more burden on property taxes, frankly. So we haven't talked about that. I understand is there is some consideration of a business tax, and VRF. So other than that, that's all I know. So we're going to be talking about that in January.
Okay.
Yeah, our first meeting about how that would be funded will be at Abernathy Center, I believe, in Clackamas County, the 19th, I believe, of, might be in December. We really had a tough time getting them here. But it's after the projects have been selected, we are going to have the first meeting about how it's funded in Clackamas County. So keep an eye open for that. We'll make sure we announce it, too.
Right. And I would add that I'm sure in the back of their minds, some form of a cap and tax or a version of HB 2020 will be on the agenda in Salem. And of course, as all of you know, they want to toll us, and they've been very vague about where that money will go. So I'm really struggling with, when I say "they," I'm really referring to, you know, ODOT and Metro. And they're acting on, as part of the transportation bill out of Salem. So it has rolled downhill, and now the cost of what we're looking at has become unaffordable. You want to make housing unaffordable? You do things like this. And we just can't do it. So I think most folks are on the same page. I think most folks are. I certainly want to close by saying that I don't come to you as someone that talks to five or six people a week and decides that I've surveyed the county. I fortunately have a life that puts me in front of a lot of businesses, a lot of people, and I got a pretty good memory, so thank you.
Well, just, you don't have to sit there, but I just want to add one other thing. The survey indicated, which I think was a bit of a surprise, that congestion and safety are number one. And people are tired of sitting. So as much as people say, "No more roads," congestion is still number one, and safety's number two. It's either one of those. So that's, I think it was very informative to the group last night. We had a long meeting, and I'll talk more about that in a bit. But we had a long meeting, and we talked about our projects and all the projects. But, all right, so with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Okay, today's consent agenda. I'm not supposed to be on camera. Okay, there we go. October 31st, 2019. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of a grant agreement with the Father's Heart Street Ministry for Warming Center Services. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Trail School District to provide preschool Promise Program Services. Approval of Amendment Number Four to the intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority for the financing of public health services administered by the local public health authority for Clackamas County. Under elected officials' approval of an intergovernmental grant agreement with the District Attorney's Office and the State of Oregon Department of Justice for the Child Abuse Multidisciplinary Intervention Program. Request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office for approval of an amendment to the Horizon Health Medical Services Contract. Under our Juvenile Department, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Gladstone for youth work crews for the Project Payback Program. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Westland for youth work crews for the Project Payback Program. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Youth Authority for individualized services. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Wilsonville for community diversion program services. Under Community Corrections, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Community Corrections and Metro to provide work crew services for fiscal year 2019-2020. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation related to the collection and distribution of vehicle registration fees. Under the Development Agency, approval of a personal services contract with Harper-Huff-Petersen and Reggellus to provide design services for Linwood Avenue Improvement Project. And underwater environment services, approval of a purchase order with Industrial Software Solutions, Wonder Ware, not Wonder Woman, LLC, to provide software support and upgrades to West Treatment Plant and Pump Station Controls Alarming and Data Acquisition. And that concludes this scary consent agenda.
Trying to find my, here it is. So do any Commissioners want to remove or pull a line from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved in second, that we approve the consent agenda. And I want to make one comment on the consent agenda and the VRF. Somebody was asking me the other day, you know, have we done an IGA? And this says that we have, with the DMV for distribution of funds. So that's good to see that on the agenda.
I think it should be noted that it was consistent with our neighboring counties in terms of costs, and it also was right on the money in terms of what staff said it would cost, five cents a transaction.
Oh, that's great. All right, with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Now we're on to county administrator updates.
Yes, Commissioners, I'd like to share some more great news of things happening here at Clackamas County. First, Clackamas County is partnering with the Clackamas County Fire District Number One, Clackamas Community College, North Clackamas School District, and other organizations to provide a free vaccination clinic in November, which starts tomorrow. Tomorrow's November, I mean. The clinic will feature an opportunity for the public to receive vaccinations for the flu, measles, mumps, rubella, and hepatitis A. The clinic, the next clinic, will take place at the Clackamas Town Center on Wednesday, November 6th, from 2:30 to 6:30 p.m. This is totally free and just one of many examples of how our county is ensuring one of your strategic goals of ensuring safe, healthy, and secure communities for our community. Next, the Clackamas County Housing Authority has received recognition from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, which has classified the Clackamas County Housing Authority as a high performer. This designation is only possible because the Housing Authority scored high on many key components, including its physical building conditions, overall financial management, and capital expenditures. As a high performer, the Housing Authority is now eligible for a wider array of HUD federal grants, notably from the Moving to Work Grant Program, which will allow us to better meet the needs of residents with low incomes. So thank you to our fantastic Housing Authority staff for becoming, in the eyes of HUD, a high performer, although we knew that was the case for a long time prior. That is my update, and again, I am a Jedi knight from Star Wars. That is my reference today. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. And also, oh, you already mentioned that Paul's at another meeting. So up first is Martha.
Yeah, well, actually, I'm just thankful. I wanted to thank you, Chair, for all the hard work you've been doing for the Sunrise Corridor, or Gateway, or the system. We've called it numerous things through the years. And I know it's a heavy lift, and I've been thinking about it because I know that there are folks that are very apprehensive about not building more roads. There is a book, however, called Road Ecology, that I think those of us who are biologists and other folks who are interested in infrastructure, take a look at it and see that we can do things in a very, very environmentally positive way as we try and build infrastructure for access. And the reason why it's so important out there, which I'm repeating myself, I think we all know this, to me, it's an equity and a diversity issue, too, really. We have people there that need the access. We have a large number... We have a large number of folks who have their homes in a trailer park there. That's a key component of our affordable housing. They need, we saw Chip here today talking about what it's like for disabled people to get in and out. That's important. It's our highest growth area and it's the highest area of Asian Americans' growth in our county. We have a diverse county. We have Hispanic populations, we've got our Russian population, we have our African American population, but again, I'm a little biased because my son's Korean, but we have this high-growth area and that infrastructure is really necessary. So, thank you for last night, thank you for doing all that work. I'm really trying to work with MPAK and encourage them that as we move forward with these notions of corridors, that we also don't forget that land use component and what that means. And also, I'm looking forward to the infrastructure because I see a possibility of having some absolutely fantastic plantings for pollinators. So, many good things. Thank you, Jim, for your hard work. It's been hard on all of us and I appreciate your place at that table, pushing for our fair share, you know, and it's a good thing, so. Well, with that, I have a little bit of something I'd like to start out with. I'd like to do the word of the week, and there's probably not going to be any surprises here. Okay. Got to pull up some Shakespeare too.
Double, double toil and trouble.
Cauldron, a large kettle or boiler. Something resembling a boiling cauldron in intensity or degree of agitation. Facts about cauldrons. A cauldron is used as a measure used in measuring coal. The first known use of the word cauldron was in the 14th century. In 1606, William Shakespeare wrote about the cauldrons in Macbeth. So, I'm going to do a little bit of a theater reading. Sorry, guys, I know we want to get through quick, but this is too good a pass up. A dark cave in the middle of boiling cauldron, thunder, enter the three witches. The first witch, thrice the once the hedge pig whined. Harpier cries, tis time, tis time. Round about the cauldron go in the poisoned entrails throw. Toad that under cold stone, days and nights has thirty-one, sweltered venom sleeping got. Boil thou first, the charmed pot. Double, double toil and trouble, fire burn and cauldron bubble. Filet of a fenny snake in the cauldron boil and bake. Eye of newt and toe of frog, wool of bat and tongue of dog. Adder's fork and blind worms sting. Lizard's leg and howl its wing. For a charm of powerful trouble, like a hellbroth boil and bubble. Double, double toil and trouble, fire burn and cauldron bubble. Scale of dragon, tooth of wolf, witch's mummy, maw and gulf. Of the raven's salt sea shark, root of hemlock digged the dark. Liver of blaspheming Jew, gall of goat and slips of ewe. Silvered in the moon's eclipse, nose of turk and tartar's lips. Finger of a birth-strangled babe, dutch titch delivered by a drap. Make the gruel thick and slab, and thereto a tiger's cauldron, for the ingredients of our cauldron. Double, double toil and trouble, fire burn and cauldron bubble. So, you know, as I think of Halloween, and it was Shakespeare, some of this is not quite politically correct, I understand that, but the bard helped invent the English language and I'm going to be inspired to buy my tickets to the Shakespeare Festival down in Ashland. Okay, arts and culture in the county? The Spiral Gallery, first Friday, November 1st, in Estacada. Sue Dumont explores the possibility of seeing into a person's heart before seeing any physical appearance. She has created heart portraits to help us do that. Westlin Library, Music and the Snacks, Saturday, September 2nd, 2:30 to 3:30 at the Westlin Library. Two Fleas and a Fluke, a ukulele trio. And on Friday, Shakespeare in Love is opening at Lakewood Theater. I have the privilege of hosting the cast party, so colleagues, you're all invited. There'll be all kinds, Ken, you love my lasagna, so, there'll be some lasagna. If you want to come and hear some more Shakespeare from folks in the community, so, in any case, happy Halloween, everyone, and be safe out there tonight.
Thank you. And Ken, here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just touching on some of Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Schrader's comments. Given the transportation needs of Clackamas County, where so many of our citizens leave the county to go to work, increased capacity is a critical component of T2020 for our needs. And I know that people are concerned about the environment, so my suggestion is that we do more of a focus on electric vehicles, quite frankly, because people still need to have individual automobiles to get to and from work and other things that they have to do. And it takes roads to do it. Another aspect that we can do that I think plays into being both environmentally friendly and more efficient is creating more jobs closer to home, i.e., Souter Timber and CLT Plant in Estacada, which will employ people in Estacada, which keeps them off the road instead of having to come all the way into town. And ISP services to our, to more homes and businesses, particularly in our rural communities ultimately, which allows people to work from home and, again, takes people off the road and extends the lifespan of our transportation infrastructure. And, incidentally, those are the kinds of jobs that pay living wages, which reduces homelessness. People with minimum wage jobs are more likely to be affected by homelessness when they have a simple financial emergency, and living wage jobs allows people to maintain their homes. Excuse me. Moving on, last week, we had a joint Fair Board meeting with the Clackamas County Commissioners to get a progress report from the Fair Board and their progress on developing their master plan and business plan and also review their finances during the fair. Our staff are to be commended for the work that they did, and I think the Fair Board was very cooperative and it was nice to see them looking at that audit from the point of view, how can we improve? It was a very positive meeting. I also had the opportunity to attend the Equity, Diversion and Inclusion Council meeting with our chief administrator, Mr. Schmidt, and took the opportunity to reassure people that we are serious about equity, diversion and inclusion, and that program will continue in our county.
Diversity.
I think I said that, didn't I?
Diversion.
Oh, diversity, excuse me.
It's okay, you're a former corrections officer.
What can I say? And then also had the opportunity to go to LeverTech Architecture and see another cross-laminated timber building being constructed. What was particularly interesting in that, besides the CLT aspect of the building, is it's a hybrid building. There's a lot of concrete and steel in that building, and two very large components of the building were being put in place, and it was ironworkers that were putting these two huge precast concrete support pieces in place. I know there has been concern by some of the other trades about the impact of cross-laminated timber on the ironworking trade, but it was ironworkers that were putting those in place. So, what we'll see is changes as we go forward in what people do or how they do it, but it's not going to be a situation where something is completely replacing another industry and people would be out of a job. So, that's all I have for this week.
No dog, huh?
No dog this week, but I will encourage everybody to go down to the shelter and see if there's a dog you'd like to adopt.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I have some pictures to share at the end of my comments, so I'll just nod to Mary when I'm ready for that. But as we all know, today is Halloween and it's just fun. It's just fun to celebrate with all of you and with our staff and all the fun costumes and the really beautiful spirit here at Clackamas County. So, thank you, county administrator, for facilitating and helping us feel all this fun today. So, I am Wonder Woman, and it was four years ago when I had just become a grandma. My little Augie was just born and I was having a birthday party at my house and I decided to do a theme, and I told everybody that came that they had to come with whatever thought of a grandmother was in their heart. So, I had the big bad wolf come with a grandma robe on and a wolf hat. There was a friend of mine that came with rollers in her hair, with all of her grandma outfits, and I had aprons and people coming, one with a dangly cigarette. There were all of these different costumes that came to my birthday party, and I came as Wonder Woman because as a grandma, you've got to do a lot of things. You've got to not only continue to take care of the home, the family, the adult children, but now the grandchildren, and it really does take a Wonder Woman to do all of those things. And so, while I may not really think I'm Wonder Woman, I aspire to be Wonder Woman. Now, little did I know that that little grandson, Augie, would have intense interests. So, he evolved from being very interested in farm animals and all the sounds of farm animals, to then all of the dinosaurs, knowing all of the dinosaurs, and then prehistoric mammals, which, if you look at a map of the world, I mean, he could tell you where all the animals are, where the countries are, and where those animals are. Well, his, some of you know, my son-in-law, Sam, is a singer-songwriter, and he wrote a song that's in one of the latest Spider-Man movies. It's called Afraid of the Dark. And if you've seen that movie, you've heard that song, that is my son-in-law's writing and his song. So, Augie, when that movie came out, went to go see Spider-Man, and oh my gosh, now it is all about superheroes, and it is everything Spidey Man, and he's ch-ch-ch-ch-ch. That's my little Augie doing his Spidey Man. And not only Spidey Man, but all Marvel characters. So, I don't really know a lot about Marvel characters, I have to say, but Augie, who's now four and a half, we watched Endgame and I kept asking him questions. Well, like, who is Thor and what is, you know, Thanos? And Augie would look at Grandpa Kirk and say, "Grandpa, why doesn't Grandma know?" It's like, what is wrong with Grandma? So, Tuesday, I got the honor and privilege of babysitting and Augie says to me, "Grandma, can we pretend fight?" And I'm like, "Yeah, let's pretend fight." And I said, "Augie, I have a Wonder Woman outfit. Should I go put it on?" He's like, "Yes, yes, go put it on." So, I went, I put on the Wonder Woman costume and he was Spidey Man, and he would wrap me up in the web and I would escape, and we had just a total fun time. And little did I know that my idea of being Wonder Woman for my celebration after he was born would lead to a whole bunch of joy and honor and fun. But the best part of all of it is the lessons about who are superheroes, what are superheroes, how does our community function, how do we stay safe? So, with that, I want to share some pictures of Augie. I know Commissioner Schrader was with me. Oh, let's do the next picture first.
Ooh.
So, this was taken at our first responders' celebration and remembrance on 9/11. Augie came to the event and got to meet with the firefighters, go in the fire truck, ask a million questions in the next picture. He got to meet our undersheriff, Brandon Berg, and really got to talk to her. She showed Augie her weapon, told him about responsibility. He was very interested in all things dealing with our current superheroes. And every time we go out and about, he will say, and he sees a fire truck, if he sees a police car, he'll say, "Grandma, those are the real superheroes." And then to go back to the first picture of Augie at, that was at our Fiala Farms Stafford Hamlet Festival. There was a face painter and that was as Augie was getting his face painted so that he could be the superhero of Spidey Man. So, with that, I want to say, happy Halloween. Please be safe. We don't want our first responders responding to anything that isn't absolutely necessary on Halloween, but thank you so much.
Thank you, and I start out the day driving here and listening to Congress and how they control the timing. I think it's amazing. So, I think for now on, we'll go 10 minutes. I get 10 minutes. I'll yield it two minutes to you.
No more.
I like it.
So, can I do Shakespeare every single time?
You can do it in 10 minutes.
Okay, that's a deal.
And then, last night was the T2020 meeting and there were basically a lot of projects that people didn't have any questions or problems with, but they seem to have problems with at least two of ours. One was the Sunrise and one was C2C. C2C is from Clackamas to Columbia, and it really isn't all our projects. Just a little bit is where we connect in Clackamas County to a Multnomah County road. And so, you know, I'm not that familiar with that one, but I am familiar with the Sunrise. And we've really worked hard to make the Sunrise project a smaller because the money's less, but also to try to address the future of a Phase Two and to provide better access for those people living in the mobile home parks. But I was actually quite lucky because, sort of quite lucky, I suggested that, you know, there's like four or five projects that people have problems with, give us an opportunity as the area that project is to present to the community, so, with slides or whatever. And so, in my email today that I sent, I suggested that. But in the end, it was turned over to me to describe the Sunrise. And of course, you don't have slides, so, I described the Sunrise, you know, that access to a lot of those people living in mobile home parks. Clackamas County is very different from a lot of counties. We don't have the road or infrastructure that a lot of counties have. We do have a lot of road, but, you know, in that area where Happy Valley is, there's really one road that to get you out of Happy Valley, and that's, what is that road? It suddenly went out of my head. No, no, the main road.
172.
Got you guys just.
The C2C project?
C2C.
C2C.
Stop!
Sunrise, Sunnyside.
Sunnyside.
Sunnyside. Look at Wonder Woman strikes again.
So, Sunnyside Road and 212 also, but anyway, so, this project would provide safety improvements, mobility improvements, and hit a lot of those values that the group needs. So, I had an opportunity to talk on my project. I was the only one that had an opportunity to do that. I had some talking points, I was ready, and I made it kind of humorous so that somebody after, a couple people after me came up to me and said, they felt a lot better about the project and I brought some excitement to the meeting, so, I made some jokes, is what I did. So, one of the problems is they've added another date to the, when I'm not here, so, I've requested that we either change the date or allow Ken to represent the county at that meeting. And I've already have to drive from Eugene to the T2020 meeting and then back to Eugene because that was the night we were going to vote. Now, they've moved it to the 4th, but I suggested that the 3rd works and there are other dates that work, so we'll see what happens. But I thought it was, you know, we're doing a lot better. I think staff here at the county and with Metro have really worked hard to make this project one that can be accepted region-wide. And I also mentioned the importance of the McLaughlin and the bridge from Gladstone to to Oregon City, and there were people there who were really thankful that. We talked about that, too. So, we're moving along, and it has been a lot of meetings. It's like every other week. It's a little crazy, and sometimes...
I'm glad you're the chair.
...not real exciting, and they're a waste of time, but at least we're moving forward. So, with that, may the force be with you.
Okay.
Happy Halloween, and we're adjourned.